Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. The meeting is being video recorded and broadcast live on Pennfield TV's Government Access Channel, which includes Spectrum Cable 1303, online at pennfieldtv.org, and social media platforms, Facebook and YouTube via Town of Pennfield Television. Following the proceedings, the video recording will be available on the town's website and on streaming devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. Simply search for Pennfield TV in your device's app store, and the app is free. If you wish to address the board, tonight during any public hearing matter, there will be an opportunity for public participation following the applicant's presentation to the board and any comments and questions from the board. We'll ask people to come up to the table and give us name and address. But you can also comment or ask questions in two other ways. One is to phone 340-8771, and the other is to submit an electronic comment through the town's website, pennfield.org. And then, of course, you can come in in person and comment as well, so we'll ask for that as well. Tonight's meeting, we're going to start first with our work session. We're going to address any table matters that we have and look at the minutes from the last meeting, vote on that. There won't be any need, I don't anticipate, to take a recess, so once the work session is done, we'll go right into tonight's public hearings. We only have two of those, so we should move along pretty well tonight. We do like to point out every month that the town takes steps to make sure everyone in town is aware of what's on our agenda and that they're aware of their rights to come in and speak about it, or send in comments, or phone comments in now. And the town does that several ways. One is to publish the agenda on its website. Another one, a very practical one, is that the town sends postcards to folks that live within a certain distance of the property, the subject of the application. The town also makes applicants post signs. So we've all seen them driving by, and you see the sign that says, "This site is under review," and if you have enough interest and you're curious, you can call and find out exactly what's going on. We think it works well. It helps us to get input from other folks, and it allows us to do our job better, we think. So with that being said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. So let's go to the agenda, and I think the first thing is probably in minutes from last meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right. We have a motion to approve the minutes as written, and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's take up the tabled application, which is 1677 Pennfield Road. This really was on tonight just to make sure that the applicant, which has taken over a self-storage facility down on Pennfield Road, is familiar with the restrictions and conditions that this board placed on its predecessor, because those were all good restrictions and conditions, and we wanted to apply them to this applicant as well. But they hadn't had a chance to review it. My understanding is they have now, and they have told us, represented to us, that they will abide by all those conditions.
That's correct.
All right.
All right. So with that said, I would make a motion to approve this application with the normal conditions and also adding in all of the conditions from the prior approval that we gave.
Probably right after you do Seeker.
See, I was getting to that, but Matt interrupted me.
Well, I'm the lead. I'm the lead, so.
Yeah, there you go. I was, didn't, Seeker hadn't even crossed my mind, to be quite honest with you.
Yeah, I was just jumping in, trying to get to the...
Yeah.
I would make an application to declare this a type-two action requiring no further review.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Matt on Seeker, type-two, and a second by Andres. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now I would make a motion to approve the application with all the normal conditions, as well as the conditions from the prior application. Going through the factors, there's ingress and egress both to Pennfield Road and to Plaza Circle, which runs between the self-storage facility and the Pennfield Poorhouse. Let's see. There is parking out front, but this is sort of a transient-type business where people come and go, so there's plenty of parking in front of the actual units themselves. For three, it's going to have the exact same impact on, to both present and future uses. There's going to be no change. It's the exact type of business that was there before. It is compatible with the general area. The signage is not changing from what it currently is right now, but also, except for the letters and the words are different, but the actual signage itself is the same from the prior, from the prior business. There's going to be no potential noise issues. It's a self-storage facility. They're not going to be hosting concerts or bands or anything like that. There is a clear sight distance. You can see pretty far down Pennfield Road when you're, in both directions, when you're sitting there. There's no issues with the existing buffering, and there's really no need for further buffering. Nobody anticipates the generation of noxious odors. There is sufficient lighting, especially given the business hours. The business hours are 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., so many times of the year, there's, it's going to be light when they're, when they're operating. So with all that said, I would make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Okay. A motion to approve by Matt, second by Andres. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We can move right into the public hearings then, and maybe we have the first one, please.
Nicholas DiMarco, DiMarco Baytown Associates LLC, 1950 Brighton Henrietta Town Line Road, Rochester, New York, 14623, requests approval for conditional use under Section 250-13.3 and Section 250-5.7-C1K of the code to allow outdoor community events at 1970 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by DiMarco Family Empire LLC and is zoned general business, SBL number 093.02-1-13.1. This is application number 24Z-0012.
I just sent somebody a text message today saying, "I don't, I don't think we're going to see Paul Calucci." It was, and I typed with great sadness. And look at...
Excuse me. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Paul Calucci with DiMarco Group here tonight on behalf of applicant. Joining me is Howie Jacobson. I'm going to let Howie go through the presentation to you. Nick is, was unavailable, so you've got me instead of Nick tonight.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have some handouts. I don't know if you've been to any of the cruise nights.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
So I coordinate events for the DiMarco family at all their plazas. And at Baytown in particular, I think you have the map of where this is, at Brand Point Park. We have done a number of events there over the last number of years. And this year, we're kicking off our steady events with our cruise nights. And cruise nights take place on Thursday nights. We generally have between 100 and 150 cars. We have plenty of parking around the flagpole area. And they start at 5:00, and they're done at 8:00. The music stops. The music starts at 5:00, and it's done at 7:30. We generally have two people, sometimes three. The noise levels are in accordance to the code. We have food. Generally, it's hosted by Pizza Hut. They come with their tent. They serve pizzas for a dollar a slice. And most of the people who have their cars sit there in lawn chairs. They have a good time. We have probably anywhere from 50 to 100 people from the community come to see the cars, take pictures, things of that nature, and it's pretty contained. We use the, I'm going to say, the police bicycle racks that we use to block off half of the roads so that we're careful with cars going in and out of there. We usually start that around 4:00 for the traffic going from, I guess we're, you're looking if you know the plaza, where Ferrari's Pizza is, down the lane to the U of R. So we block half of that off, but cars can go back and forth just to slow people down. We have banners there at tonight's car night. And that's a regular event, starts the 23rd of May, every Thursday night through the end of September. Other than that regularly scheduled event, periodically tenants from the plaza or community groups want to come and do something on that piece of property. So we screen them. I meet with them to see what they want to do. Orange Theory periodically will do a yoga class out there. Howard Hanna did a thing, did an event for an hour and a half during the eclipse. He set up tables. And we have hosted movie nights. I don't know if we're going to do that again. It's a pretty risky location to do movie nights because of the wind. You could think of the rain, but it's really the wind. Even on a nice night, we get a pretty good wind there. We do have two tents that go up, two small tents, and I think you'll see them in the pictures there. McCarthy Tent, who just moved, is a new neighbor in Pennfield. They set up two tents. We keep them up permanently. They're not enclosed, they're just the tops, so the band is protected from the weather. And the other one is for anyone that's there for the car show that wants to come in and have a little picnic. We give them cover from the sun. There's no trees there. It's pretty sunny, hopefully. We have done a number of other events. We've had a shredding event. We did a, two years ago, or actually, I guess it's three years ago now, we did a bicycle safety event with Pennfield Fire Department, which was great. We may do that again. But we periodically get calls from people, and I didn't, I've been telling everybody that we were coming here before we started signing up other people. I would assume, other than cruise nights, we'll probably do six to 10 other community-type events. Most of the events we do are between 10:00 in the morning and 8:00 at night. We're very careful of the noise codes. We have a portable toilet that's handicap accessible, that's placed, that's cleaned every week, that's in one of the car spots. So we have that piece taken care of. The site is cleaned on a regular basis, definitely after a cruise night, so it's neat and clean out there. I'm trying to think of what other questions you may have or things that I'm missing that might be in the...
We can launch into them, if you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
Looking at the past applications, I think it goes back to 2018.
Right.
I think, from the sounds of it, everything's going to stay pretty much the same in terms of how you're going to operate things, from what I understand. The one thing that you spoke of tonight, two tents versus, I think in the past, we had talked about 140 by 80-foot tent is what the past resolutions had.
Right.
How do we want to go about that? What size tents? Or do you want to have a 40 by 80 tent? Do you want to have two smaller tents? What's the thought?
We want two smaller tents. In the beginning, when we started, we had the 40 by 80 tent. It had some issues. It's really big. Putting the financial piece across, it's really big, and that site, from a wind, it got beaten up pretty bad. We also did it on purpose because we tried the farmer's market for three years, and we put the movie screens inside the tent so that people could be out of the wind and out of the, out of the rain. We have decided not to do that again. We don't need a 40 by 80 tent. So we, putting up two smaller tents, and I can give you the dimensions, but I don't have them from memory.
Sure.
But they're two smaller tents.
Okay.
I think a 20 by 20, and a, I think the band tent is 10 by 20.
Okay. But I mean, basically, we're staying below the 40 by 80 that we talked about, just going to be two smaller sizes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Perfect. And then, I think the other thing we had here, displaying two 3 by 12-foot signs affixed to the tent, that still sounds accurate?
Yes.
Okay. I think hours of operations, we're still staying the same, 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday?
Yeah, and I would say that it's, only if we do a movie night...
Right.
Would we have anything after 9:00?
Okay. And I don't see anything else to question from what you guys were doing before. It looks like, you know, parking, egress, all those types of things. You're inside the center of the plaza, you have, you know, adequate drive lanes and things like that.
Yes.
I think that was all covered last time we had you guys in. I don't see any changes from that.
No changes from that, and we have really plenty of parking, even with all the cars that have been excited about coming here.
Okay.
Have you, are you aware of any complaints from the community over the years that you've hosted events here?
I'm not aware of any complaints.
Is the town?
No.
Okay, perfect. I have nothing. I have nothing.
I'm good. Okay, great. Anybody on the phone? I don't think so. I don't, give me a minute on the computer. No. Need a password. It's going to be more than a minute.
We just heard from above that there are no calls.
And no electronic comments either, from the website?
We haven't received that.
Okay, great. Anyone in the audience care to speak about this? All right.
We're going to have to hold them back there, so.
Let's go to Seeker.
Let's jump right in. Okay. I'm going to move this to type-two action pursuant to Seeker, requiring no further review.
Second.
Seeker motion by Andres, type-two, second by Matt. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, I'm going to move to approve this conditional use permit to allow the continuation of the outdoor events. It's going to mirror, from the looks of it, everything's the same as the last resolution we did, except we're going to change the type of tents, basically, to two smaller tents. And I'll say not to exceed the 40 by 80 size in total. Going through the factors, ingress, egress, we see no issues there. It's an internal, it's internal to the plaza. They do have driveways to Empire and Creek. There's adequate parking facilities around. The applicant said there's no issues with the event space, and it won't interfere with the, with the existing parking spaces. Shouldn't be any impact to both present and future uses. This has been happening since 2018 without any issues, so nothing's been identified for that. It's compatible with, with the area. It has been happening since 2018, so I guess this is, in a sense, a part of the area now. The Brand Point Park area has, has plenty of space to allow for this, so it doesn't seem to be any more significant impact for the area, for the district. Signage will stay the same as what we talked about before, two 3 by 12-foot signs around the tent, and they'll just match whatever the town code is for the signage. Noise associated, nothing that, evidence was shown that would be identified that it would be a noise issue from past use as well. Adequate clear sight distance, there's no issues in terms of accessing the public right-of-way because they're inside the center of the plaza. No, nothing for buffering. They're not adding any additional buffering for the site. No noxious odors are identified. All the lighting for this will be as-is for the plaza. All the plaza lights, as they have in the parking lot, will be all they're going to use. And the hours of operation should have no issues with the neighbors. We're going to do 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. through 10:00 p.m. Friday through Saturday. And that's all, I think I see here, besides, that's everything. That's all I got.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
So will this be for two years?
Yeah, I was going to chime in on, did we pick two years for any particular reason?
I guess just to see if, how it worked, and if we got any complaints or issues.
I don't have a problem if we wanted to double it, five years. I mean, I, I think Matt, Matt and I spoke prior, saying, "Is there a reason we set two?" I think it was just more to make sure we were good for, so I guess...
I would agree, five years seems reasonable.
Five years sound fair?
Sounds great.
Perfect. All right, so we'll change, we'll move it to five years.
Okay.
And that's it.
I, if we didn't have a second, I'll second that motion.
No, it's all you.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with all the conditions cited, bumping it up to five years. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
See you, everyone. Have a great night. Take care.
Come out to one of the cruise nights.
Yeah.
They're really fun. I mean, people have a blast out there. We've been getting some great cars, and we're basically the only cruise night on Thursdays.
Well.
So we've avoided a lot of the other, you know, having problems with a Ronda Quaid or Webster. I mean, we're like on the schedule.
You had me at a dollar a slice.
Yeah. We got great bands this year also, so, thank you.
Awesome.
Have a good night.
Have a good night. Bye-bye. Good work there. All right. Thanks. Let's launch into number two, please.
Brett and Melissa Gardner, 2047 Salt Road, Fairport, New York, 14450, request approval for an area variance under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a second garage, whereas a maximum of one garage is permitted under Section 250-5.1-D2 of the code at 2047 Salt Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Brett and Melissa Gardner and is zoned RR-1, SBL number 125.04-1-17.2. This is application number 24Z-0016.
All right. I think we may have your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Anthony Natale. I represent Finger Lakes Construction and Marshall Exteriors on behalf of the Gardeners. We propose to add a second garage. The Gardeners purchased this home about four years ago. There is a garage attached to the house, which has two parking spaces, which are occupied by Brett and Melissa. Their daughter is now starting to drive in the next couple of months, which requires a parking spot, and they have two boys that will be driving in the next couple of years as well. So, a lot of cars. So they have, they currently on their property, they have another building, which is in, I guess we would call it, an accessory building. So you can't have two accessory buildings or two garages. And there is also a shed in the back, which I believe is not on the survey. So what we're proposing is where that shed is, is to remove and dispose of that and replace it with a 24 by 32 garage, which will essentially allow them to move some things out of the current garages and accessory buildings into this one, which will allow for more parking for the people in the house who are driving. The choice was made between calling it accessory building versus calling it a second garage based on the property lines, that where that current shed is, if we were to put the garage there, it's about 10 feet off the property line, which a second garage falls in. Wouldn't require any other variances or area variances in order to build there. They have approximately five acres there. There's plenty of room there. There is, not only is there not necessarily a neighbor next to the garage, but it's very, very wet down there. I don't foresee there ever being anybody building down there. We do plan to manage the water off of the new garage with six-inch gutters, 3 by 4 downspouts and splash blocks, just for the simple fact that if there was anybody there in the future, we might as well take care of those water issues up front. Other than that, it's, it's a pretty simple build. It's a 24 by 32 building. It's, like everything else that they've, they've done, we've done approximately $300,000 in improvements on that house in the last couple of years. So they are certainly great residents. They're just looking for places to park and continue to be great residents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You say it's going to be 24 by 32, or is it 32 by 32?
It's 24 by 32 with an eight-foot by eight-foot storage next to it.
Okay.
And then, like, an open porch that opens up to the back.
Okay, so the totality of it is 32 by 32?
The totality is 32 by 32.
Okay.
The garage enclosed space is 24 by 32.
All right. And they're not going to be operating any businesses out of there, using it for commercial purposes?
No commercial, no business, no, nothing along with it.
How tall is it?
10 feet, at the eaves.
Okay.
For 12 pitch.
And, and the application said it's going to be about 300 feet from the road?
Yes.
And it's not going to be visible from the road?
I guess if you were at the exact right angle, driving this way, you may be able to see...
It's not very, it's not very tall, yeah.
...way, way over there, if there was no foliage, but basically, no.
Is it going to be in line with the character of the house and what the current house looks like?
Yes.
What color, what color is the garage going to be?
Um, I believe the colors are blue. Is it on there?
No, I just know this house very well. I love the, the new siding, by the way.
Thank you.
This is the current color of the siding.
It was a lot of work.
Yeah.
Came out very nice. I believe there's, I believe there's some black to it as well, black on the roof.
Okay.
I don't have the colors in front of me.
Okay. Are there going to be utilities going to the garage?
No water, there will be electric.
Yeah, you said it was wet. There's no wetland or anything back there, right?
No, it's just next to it, it's just, it's soft. You know, like, yes, where you're pointing, like, down there, it's, you know.
But it hasn't been designated a wetland or environmentally protected or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
Just nowhere where I don't think people would want to build in that lot.
Okay. I have nothing else.
Okay. Any further questions from the board? All right. I don't see any electronic submissions and no phone calls. I'll ask if anyone in the audience cares to speak about this. No? All right, let's move to the consideration of Seeker.
I'd make a motion to declare this a type-two action, requiring no further review.
Second.
All right. We have Matt. You got it? Okay. So we have a motion on Seeker. No further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the merits?
All right. I would make a motion to approve this action with the normal conditions, but also with a condition that that 10-foot by 14-foot shed that's on the property be taken down and not put back up on the property. As far as the actual factors themselves, there'll be no undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. This is, this is, A, a relatively rural second, area town. It's not uncommon for, for houses in East Pennfield to have more than one outbuilding, for whatever, whether it's a barn, a pole barn, a garage. This is going to be in line with the character of the neighborhood. It's also going to be approximately 300 feet from the road, and it's going to be very difficult, if not impossible, to see from the road, and there's no neighbors now and likely won't be any neighbors. Really, any other method, if they want to call it a pole barn or something else, no matter what, they're going to need a variance. So there's no other method that would, that is available that wouldn't require a variance. It is substantial. It's 100% variance. It's going from one to two buildings.
It's going from one to two buildings. For the same reasons that it's not going to have an iron, an undesirable change, it won't be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood, it won't have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental condition of the neighborhood, so. And then it is self-created, but the rest of the factors outweigh that. So for those reasons, I would make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion to approve. Matt, second by Andres. Any further discussion? All right. Another good job. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, board.
Good luck. Take care. That was the last application for tonight, so we will stand adjourned until our next meeting. Thank you all very much. Well done.
Good night.[1756.86]